Guys, I don't have a gavel, so assume I hit it. The meeting's called the order, Mr. Steve Downs will lead the pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hey, Steve, we'll need a roll call to determine if we have a forum.
All right. Rod and Fruit?
Here.
Karen Tepley?
Here.
Tom McCarthy?
Here.
Mark Chambers? Kevin Melby?
Here.
Melanie Walters?
Here.
Steve Downs?
Here.
Ryan Cairns?
Here.
We have a forum.
Excellent. Was this meeting properly noticed?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Next on the agenda, approval of the minutes. Once the council has had a moment to read through those, entertain a motion to approve. So your motion to approve the minutes?
I'll make that motion.
Motion for Mr. Melby is our second.
Second.
Second for Mr. Downs. Any discussion of the minutes? Hearing none, all in favor of approving the minutes, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion is carried. Minutes approved. Next, approval of the agenda. Again, once the council has had a moment to read through tonight's agenda, entertain a motion to approve.
Make a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion from Ms. Tepley is there a second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Downs. Any discussion of tonight's agenda? Hearing none, all in favor of approving tonight's agenda, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion is carried. Agenda approved. Next on the agenda, City and Utility Department have reports and concerns. Mr. Coe, did you have anything you wanted to share tonight?
Um, no concerns. Um, I guess something to do with work. The Eighth Street Project are gearing up the end of the storm sewer installation. I think they're planning on having that done today with the exception of section in the Church Street intersection. So after that, they'll be cutting grade in. We had one on that, so my block is up here shortly.
Excellent. Great job. Thank you. Let's see, who else do we have here tonight? Mr. Glassbender, did you have anything?
Sure. A little bit from the economic development side of things. We continue to work on the conceptual plan that EPA provided for the recently purchased land downtown between Orange Street, Court Street, and Mill Street. That plan was showed potential development of a hotel, multifamily housing, and office space or retail space. Many people noticed in town that Los Amigos Two is expanding into the storefront next door. Part of that effort is being, is happening because the city was an applicant for a WEDC Community Development Investment Grant that we continue to process and contribute to Los Amigos for that expansion. Panorama Estates, we continue to work towards the development agreement on that. The most recent update is that we had to go back through and validate the condition of Highway 14 and the access to Panorama Court on the Highway 14. We've successfully done that, and the developer now has the most recent version of the development agreement in his hands. Some people hopefully will have noticed that there are wayfinding signs up. That's a project that actually predates me, but I've been working on it with Ms. Tepley and several others, Keith. There were a lot of people involved in the community. And so we have wayfinding signs actually going up right now. So that, that's encouraging. We continue to work on TIF districts. Right now, we have a focus on downtown Orange Street area where we've outlined a district, and we are looking towards moving forward through the process of having that established. And we can, we are currently working or inquiring with an engineering firm to help us walk through the process of reinvigorating the redevelopment authority and/or a community development authority, especially with our refocus on the Orange Street corridor, which historically, a lot of that work took place in redevelopment authority. So those are some of the updates from economic development.
Thank you. Ashley, did you have anything tonight?
Yes, I do. Early voting has started, and it ends on August 9th. So anybody that would like to vote early is welcome to come to the clerk's office between 8:30 and 4:00 p.m. Monday through Friday and do early voting. We have everything set up for the election on the 13th, which will be up here, of course, at the community center. The clerk's office will be closed on the 13th, as all staff will be assisting with the elections. Right now, we're preparing for budget season, so departments are going to be working on their budgets, and in addition, they'll be doing their performance evaluations for employees. We've contracted with Beerbecker to complete a revaluation RFP, which we hope to have published by the 16th. We have a draft of it right now that we're reviewing. And lastly, after the last personnel committee meeting, we are pleased to announce that Jason Glassbender has been selected to be our Director of Public Works, and he will be focused on city planning and development.
Would you do me a favor? For the public's benefit, would you please introduce the person to your right?
Oh, Amanda. She was at our last meeting with us. She is the administrative assistant in the clerk treasurer's office, and she is taking the minutes, meeting minutes for us tonight and getting the hang of things.
Thank you very much. All right. Okay, next on the agenda, Mayor and Alder Person's Committee Commission Board Reports, Comments, and or Edges to Be Discussed. I'll start on my left, Mr. Ryan Cairns.
Don Mayor, thank you.
Mr. Rod and Fruit?
On behalf of Greater Richland Tourism, I'd like to advise the common council that Mark McCauley has made it known that he'll no longer be clearing the Pine River for kayaking and canoeing after this year. Mark's efforts and those of others for more than a decade have turned the Pine River into a significant reason to visit Richland Center in Richland County. The Pine River is believed to be Greater Richland Tourism's top five reasons that people come to this area. The other four are scenic views and quiet disconnection, hiking, exploring, the nostalgic feel of childhood, including but not limited to the city itself, the drive-in theater, the roller rink and friendly people, and unique lodging, including Anaway Place and other tiny homes. And Norbert and Susan Callen, who I know many of you know, reported about a third of their guests at Anaway Place arrived with kayaks in tow. Greater Richland Tourism believes that all five reasons are critical to assure continued tourism growth in our community. So at this time, the Tourism Commission, Greater Richland Tourism, would like this council to be aware and proactive in planning how to move forward with the help and cooperation of Richland Center Parks and Recreation, Richland County, and its Parks Commission, of which is aware of this matter, and Greater Richland Tourism. That's all, Mayor. Thank you.
It's very professional reporting, Mr. Fruit. Hey, Tom, you're next. Mr. Melby?
Nothing tonight, man.
Mr. Downs?
Nothing tonight, man.
Ms. Walters?
I have nothing tonight. Thank you.
Tepley?
Yes, a little bit from the library board. As many of you may have noticed, there's a, a new UPS box out in front of the library. So any packages can be dropped in that box, but there will no longer be collection inside the library. There was, obviously, it's a great service, and I think the UPS would be well advised to put a UPS store in our community. That would be wonderful. It just, it takes away from library patrons and servicing them. They have to scan the package, they have to move the package from the desk to another location and to yet another location when the driver comes. So it's quite a bit of moving packages around. One of the employees was hurt during the process. That's not a major reason to discontinue the service. It's just, like I said, detracts from actual library patrons. Friends and Foundation, I would like to host a celebration for the library's 55th anniversary on Saturday, November 2nd. It's a little down the road, but you can put it in your calendar. And, and just ongoing programming is, is going great. We have, as many of you know, we have a, a new person in the programming position. So she's been doing a great job. That's about it from the library.
Thank you. Okay, I'll report from the ambulance committee. At the last meeting, we were told, one of the building that they're now in, which is right outside, was purchased a few years back. It was known at the time that the roof would need some repairs in the near future. The roof is now leaking water, and we were told that the service needs $110,000 to repair the roof, of which they need $110,000 to repair the roof. So I don't know exactly what that's going to mean yet, other than we'll have to find a funding source. That's not just a city issue, of course. That will involve Richland County and the townships, of course, that use the service. I just thought the public should be made aware that there's an issue with the roof of the building that will have to be addressed. Okay, next we have the treasurer's report.
In your packet, you have both the utility treasurer's report as well as the city's treasurer's report, and I would be happy to take any questions after you've reviewed that.
Questions or comments regarding the treasurer's report? Throw in, I entertain a motion to approve the report.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve the treasurer's report. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Downs. A motion, second, any discussion of the treasurer's report? Okay, hearing none, let's have a roll call, please.
Rod and Fruit?
Aye.
Karen Tepley?
Aye.
Tom McCarthy?
Aye.
Melby?
Aye.
Walters?
Aye.
Downs?
Aye.
Cairns?
Aye.
Motion is approved.
Motion is carried.
Okay, there you go. There you go. Okay, next is payment of the bills. While the council reviews those bills, it's my duty to read the following. The bills presented on this day excluding any library invoices, library fund invoices. Having been referred to the Finance and Budget Committee and said committee having duly investigated and audited these bills, hereby make the following recommendation, that the city bills presented on this day be paid with the following adjustments and/or exemptions known or listed. It is signed by the members of the Finance Committee. Once the council's had a moment to review, entertain a motion to pay the bills.
Motion to pay the bills.
Motion for Mr. Melby. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Downs. Any discussion of the bills? Hearing none, we'll need a roll call for that.
Cairns?
Aye.
Downs?
Aye.
Walters?
Aye.
Melby?
Aye.
McCarthy?
Aye.
Tepley?
Aye.
Fruit?
Aye.
Motion is carried.
Excellent. Okay, next on the agenda, Finance Committee Recommendations in Action. And Ryan, are you going to do that? Are you, okay. You've got it. Melanie's got it.
All right. Item three, landfill, leachate line jetting, and video servicing from Public Works. Did you want to give any background on this, or do you want me to do that?
I can do it. I can do it. So for the past, I believe, 15 years...
Are you getting him, Rod? Are you getting him? Yeah. Okay, thank you.
So I believe for the past 15 years or so, the wastewater department has been doing a flushing of the leachate system, which was approved through the DNR up until this last year, when they changed their, their codes for leachate flushing and jetting. So we are required to jet the leachate system once a year now from this year forward, and televising it every five years, starting with this year. So we got three bids for this. One coming from Superior Jetting for $4,750, one from Speedy Clean, $6,480, and one from Aqualus for $1,200. The department recommendation is to accept the estimate from Speedy Clean for $6,480 based on they came out and inspected the landfill and gave me an actual report. The other two companies never came out to inspect anything. They just email over an estimate, so I feel it's going to be the closest quote on that.
Thank you. So this has been discussed at Public Works, and then we also discussed it at Finance. So my motion would be to authorize contracting with Speedy Clean for line jetting and video of the landfill at a cost to not exceed $7,500, and the funds will be coming from pool number two, which is the landfill long-term care.
A motion from Ms. Walters. Is there a second?
A second.
Second from Ms. Tepley. Any discussion?
Melanie, this funding sources is what you talked about, public works, correct?
Yes.
For the set aside portion of the...
Yes.
Further discussion? Okay, hearing none, we'll need a roll call, please.
Fruit?
Aye.
Tepley?
Aye.
McCarthy?
Aye.
Ch- uh, Melby?
Aye.
Walters?
Aye.
Downs?
Aye.
Cairns?
Aye.
Motion is carried.
Okay, item number four, Eighth Street Project Expansion, North Park Street between Eighth and Ninth Street. I will, if you don't mind, let you give a little background on this topic.
Yeah, so this is a proposed expansion of the project that's been in the planning, and this, this spring and summer has been under construction of North, or of Eighth Street and North Park Street. There was a section of North Park Street between Eighth and Ninth that was only slated for a partial replacement, and that was largely an expansion that was desired by our utilities. Steve Krueger had identified that there were some water laterals that we wanted, he would like to replace, and so he had gone ahead. But the city had kind of said, well, we'll just replace the blacktop that gets removed in that process, and we won't do anything further. However, as the project has progressed, we've noticed that, that more curb and street has had to be removed in order to accomplish those tasks. And in addition, this is a major artery for the city. A lot of traffic travels that, and so to do kind of a patch work process on it doesn't seem appropriate considering the amount of traffic that it'll receive. So with that in mind, at our site meetings out in the field, which all of the utility department heads attend, as well as Jason, myself, and MSA Engineering and G-Pro Construction, we identified that it may be the best idea to propose having some additional work done on North Park between Eighth and Ninth. There were three options presented by the engineering firm. One was to replace the cemetery driveway apron, as well as a small patch of blacktop affected at a cost of $2,500. The second option was replace cemetery driveway apron and all remaining blacktop on North Park Street between Eighth and Ninth at a cost of $6,200, or to replace the cemetery driveway apron, all remaining blacktop, and all remaining curb and gutter on North Park Street between Eighth and Ninth at a cost of $13,000 to $15,000. It's kind of hard to probably understand these schematics, but this is the section of North Park between Eighth Street and the Ninth Street is here. The black is, dark black are areas that were already going to be disturbed, and this red area represents what they would do at an additional cost of the least option, which was 25, what did I say, $2,500? So the next option then looks at expanding even further, and you can see replacing apron and then additional blacktop up to Ninth. And then the third option was replacing all the remaining curb that was initially not supposed to be disturbed, as well as the curb, the apron, and the blacktop all the way through Ninth. I do have some conditioned pictures, but they are a little bit difficult to see probably on the screen. This one particularly is the apron at the cemetery, which the blacktop overlay has been laid on top of the curb apron, and this tree has really disturbed the curb, broken it down, made it an uneven drainage surface. This picture here is looking back towards Eighth Street, and you can see that there's been an awful lot of curb already disturbed in the process. Couple more pictures here at the bottom. This is looking towards Ninth Street here. And so we would be replacing all the curb and all of the blacktop to Ninth, which is kind of mid-picture there. You can see, again, a lot of the street's already been torn out. And this is a picture just beyond Ninth, looking back towards Eighth, where, again, you can see a large patch has been taken out. So with that, the recommendation that was suggested or given was to, again, proceed with option number three. Trying to get back to that page. To proceed with option number three, to replace all of the elements that have been talked about on North Park Street between Eighth and Ninth at a cost not to exceed $20,000. The funds have been identified to be able to come from a machinery outlay account, which we didn't use all of the money to use to purchase a street vacuum. So we have leftover money there of $30,000. We would reallocate the funds from street machinery outlay to street project outlay, and the corresponding funds are listed in your agenda cover sheet.
Thank you. So my motion would be to approve the Eighth and Park Street Project Expansion, which would be option number three, which would be to replace the cemetery driveway apron, all remaining blacktop, and all curb and gutter on North Park Street between Eighth and Ninth Street at a cost not to exceed $20,000. The $20,000 will be relocated from the street machinery outlay into the street projects outlay.
Okay, we have a motion from Ms. Walters. Is there a second?
A second.
Second from Ms. Tepley. Is there discussion? Okay, hearing none, we'll need a roll call.
Cairns?
Aye.
Downs?
Aye.
Walters?
Aye.
Melby?
Aye.
McCarthy?
Aye.
Tepley?
Aye.
Fruit?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item number five, hiring and retention bonuses. So this is something that we have discussed at Personnel Committee to, and, sorry, I just lost my turn. To be able to attract and retain qualified personnel, which is a challenge, not just for municipalities, it's a challenge for many businesses. One of the things that we have discussed is doing hiring and retention bonuses. It would keep us competitive. It would reward employees that stay with the city for longer term. Then this would be eligible for new hires in full-time positions after August 1st. Bonus amount would be determined by the city administrator, but there would be contingencies for the employee for completing a probationary period and having continuous employment to receive the bonus. And then the retention bonus, again, we would, it would be for employees that have gone above and beyond, are taking on extra duties, and again, this would be a one-time bonus that would be paid out in the month of August. The program will be funded, allocated in $45,000 in ARPA funds. And again, we have discussed this at Personnel and just feel that this would be a good program moving forward. I don't know if you have anything you want to add that I didn't hit. Okay. So my motion would be to approve the City of Richland Center Hiring and Retention Bonus Program, not to exceed $45,000 utilizing ARPA funds.
Can motion from Ms. Walters. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. McCarthy. Is there discussion?
How is it, Ashley, you just determine the figure? Is it a set figure for each employee, or what is it based on?
So it would be based on the position, and has that position had to take on supervisory responsibilities that they would not have been expected to have before? It's for those in departments that have been experiencing long-term vacancies. So it's just taking into account their role, what additional responsibilities have they been taking on, and how long have there been vacancies within that department?
So every employee is going to get something?
No, not every employee, because not every department has to have vacancies.
Does that answer your question, Kevin, or did you have more?
No, that does, thank you.
Okay, further discussion? Okay, hearing none, we'll need a roll call.
Fruit?
Aye.
Tepley?
Aye.
McCarthy?
Aye.
Ch- Melby?
Aye.
Walters?
Aye.
Downs?
Aye.
Cairns?
Aye.
Motion is carried.
All right, item six, purchase of RCPD squad. Chief Jones had to go back to National Night Out, so I will do my best to make him proud of my presentation. So last year, or previously, we had approved for the City Police Department to purchase a new squad. They had purged, had, had one allocated, and then production was shut down for the year. So Billy put it back out to bid again. We received three bids back from Philback and Sleepy Hollow. Philback came in at, not only the low bid, but they were able to meet all the specs at a purchase price of $41,455.50. This will be replacing a 2019 Ford Interceptor that has over 100,000 miles on it. So this item has already been budgeted for. They currently have in their budget $66,000, which will include the cost of equipment and installation. So my motion is to approve the purchase of a 2025 Dodge Durango Pursuit from Philback Ford in the amount of $41,455.50 plus the cost of equipment and installation, with the total cost to not exceed $66,000, and that will be paid out of the police outlay fund.
Second. Have the motion, and the second is their discussion. Okay, hearing none, we'll need a roll call.
Cairns?
Aye.
Downs?
Aye.
Walters?
Aye.
Melby?
Aye.
McCarthy?
Aye.
Tepley?
Aye.
Fruit?
Aye.
Motion is carried.
Item seven, RCPD vehicle repairs. So in the past couple months, we've had a couple incidents with squads. One incident in June was a squad car rolled out of its parking spot into one of the county's squad cars, did very minimal damage to the city squad, but did damage the side door of the Sheriff's Department squad. And then in July, the Ram truck that the city has, my understanding from Chief Jones is it's kind of a tight fit in the garage, and when the officer was pulling out, they caught the edge of the garage and did some damage to the vehicle. No damage to the building, though. So in talking to the insurance company, they had said that if, because we had two incidents back-to-back, it could potentially raise premiums. Billy went and got estimates, and so he is requesting that instead of claiming it on insurance, that we just pay for the repairs ourselves to keep our insurance premiums from going up. So the motion would, my motion would be to approve using up to $6,500 from our unallocated contingency fund for squad repairs to the police vehicles.
Motion from Ms. Walters. Is there a second?
A second.
Second from Ms. Tepley. Is there a discussion? Hearing none, we'll need a roll call.
Fruit?
Aye.
Tepley?
Aye.
McCarthy?
Aye.
Melby?
Aye.
Walters?
Aye.
Downs?
Aye.
Cairns?
Aye.
Motion is carried.
Okay, next on the agenda, items for discussion in action. Item eight, temporary alcohol beverage license for St. Mary's Parish Festival on 9/14/2024, 3:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. Mr. Melby, would you be handling this one?
I will.
There you go.
Public safety met last night, and one of the items we discussed was the temporary alcohol beverage license for St. Mary's Church for their annual fall festival on September 14th, 3:00 p.m. until 9:00 p.m.
Motion from Mr. Melby. Is there a second? Second from Mr. Downs. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of approving the temporary alcohol beverage license for St. Mary's Mary's Parish Festival on 9/14/2024, 3:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, it is approved. Item nine, consider the request for land division at 27105 Maple Ridge Lane, this is brought by the Plan Commission, this was brought to us by Kent and Christie Adcent, who want to divide their lot into two lots to, frankly, to make it easier to sell. Kent was pretty eloquent with it, zoning had no problem with it, the township has no problem with it, it is recommended for approval. From the Plan Commission, is, are there any questions? Hearing done, entertain a motion to approve the request for land division at 27105 Maple Ridge Lane.
So, fruit, some more.
Motion from Ms. Tepley, is, is there a second? Second from Mr. Downs, any discussion? Hearing done, we'll need a roll call, please.
Fruit.
Aye.
Tepley.
Aye.
McCarthy.
Aye.
Walters.
Aye.
Melby.
Aye.
Downs.
Aye.
Karens.
Aye.
Motion is carried.
Okay, item ten, codification update and determination of next steps, Mr. Michael Winkle.
So, last we left it, I had explained my concerns regarding the state of the code ordinances and talked about the possibility of simply starting over. I've had a number of informal discussions with a number of you and having to work with it further, I would just reiterate that unless there is a definitive directive not to, from here forward, what I will plan to do is begin incorporating or determining an appropriate model code to use as a base. What I will need is input from member may have it, whether that be the council and members of the public, if there are any specific ordinances, laws, issues that absolutely must be addressed so that I can incorporate those into what I send to MUNI code rather than trying to fix them on the tail end. The model code will cover all the basics, so minor offenses, zoning, animals, and I'm, I haven't come across anything that stood out to me as something that would not be included in a model code, but again, it's very confusing and disjointed and so it wouldn't necessarily stand out to me. So, I'm looking for either a directive to not do that or input over the next couple months, I would say, as I create a, or adapt a model code for submission, this council will approve whatever I want to send to MUNI code, so it's not like I'm just rewriting our laws and sending them out. And I've also alerted the department heads that I'll have them review the relevant chapters of the, the code, but then at that point we'll move forward and finalize the codification.
Okay, hearing done, so moved it, Mr. Winkle. Thank you. Okay, next item, closed session, item 11, for the purpose of discussing ongoing litigation, mediation, and the council's relationship with the Utility Commission, subsequent to public hearing, the chair may entertain a motion to enter into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin Statute Section 19.85-1G inferring the legal counsel for the governmental body who is rendering oral or written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation in which it is or is likely to become involved pursuant to Wisconsin Statute Section 19.85-1F considering financial, medical, social, or personal histories or disciplinary data of specific persons, preliminary consideration of specific personnel problems, or the investigation of charges against specific persons except where paragraph B applies, which if discussed in public would be likely to have a substantial adverse effect upon the reputation of any person referred to in such histories or data or involved in such problems or investigations.
Mr. Mayor, before you call for the vote, I just wanted to clarify, given the interest in the subject, these are two separate matters for discussion, the litigation and mediation regards an ongoing lawsuit that the city is involved in.
I was about to say the same thing, there are two issues here, not one, so if that reads like we're doing one thing, it is not, okay. All right, motion, is there a motion to go into closed session?
Some more.
I've got Mr. Downs, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Ms. Tepley, any discussion? All in favor of closed session, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are now in closed session. Okay. Okay, is there a motion to accept the mediated settlement in the Walmart lawsuit?
Some more.
Motion by Mr. Melby, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Downs, any discussion? Hearing done, I want a roll call on this.
Fruit.
Aye.
Tepley.
Aye.
McCarthy.
Aye.
Melby.
Aye.
Walters.
Aye.
Downs.
Aye.
Karens.
Aye.
Motion is carried, that issue is resolved, and we have a statement from the city council, and I will read it as follows, "This council feels it necessary to make a public statement regarding the performance of Administrator Oliphant. The council has reviewed the investigation report, heard the concerns of the public at a recent hearing, and performed its own evaluation of her performance and find that the administrator, that Administrator Oliphant has performed her duties to the satisfaction of this council and that we support her ongoing efforts. The council is aware of the need to improve the relationship with the Utility Commission and will be working with the commissioners to address those concerns in order to realign the efforts of both bodies. Administrator Oliphant will continue to be instrumental in those efforts."
Okay, next on tonight's agenda, appointments, committees, commission boards, we don't have any tonight, public comment, no council action will be taken on any matter originating under this item, I've not been told of anyone who wants to speak tonight, is there anyone who would like to do so? Yes, sir.
It's more of an announcement, it came up via a contact from Pat Elliott, committee chair of the Parks Rec Committee, and they've been getting reports about, should have a shelter over on the east end of the Aquatic Center building. Well, Pat talked to Sheila Troxel, Sheila Troxel talked to me, and want to know if something could happen, so we've been underway, we've put together some plans for doing that, then we can get a structure pre-built from Driftless, so it's a second aid.
Outdoors?
Yeah, Driftless Outdoors up north on Highway 80, probably 16-inch structure, and of course that would take some, a little bit of grading, base course and concrete slab, and then the structure gets bolted down to the concrete. So, we did go out for one set of bids and the concrete bid was outrageous, the park committee turned it down, and it's out for rebid, and we're looking at later this month for another bid opening, and we put in there because we know these concrete guys are busier than busy, and we gave them until next spring to actually have it finished. So, we'll see how the bids come in and then I guess we have to come before the park board and then back to you folks before the final go-ahead was the whole thing, and a piece of this is a rubbery club as indicated to finance the project. So, it's just an announcement to you with.
Thank you.
What's going on, and that came internally from what they were hearing, hearing and hearing about that shade and that kind of thing, that heat.
I can see it, thanks, Keith. Anyone else? Yes, sir.
I was wondering if you could give me an update on what the city's plan is for property reevaluation in the near future.
Yeah, actually, do you want to comment on it?
So, we've contracted with Veerbecker to do an RFP for the revaluation, so right now we have a draft of the RFP and we hope to have it published by the 16th, but it's likely, probably 18 months before there's a firm that's available to actually conduct it.
So, that'll push it out into 2026?
It could, potentially, we'll know once we get the responses to the RFP.
What's our status with the State Department of Revenue on that, are we?
We have been notified that we need to conduct one.
And next year we will be as well?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. At what point does the state step in and do one for you?
They're not likely to do one for us, we're making action, we're taking, we're making a good faith effort at getting it done, so they're not likely to intervene.
As long, if we did take the step we're taking now, we might have a different conversation, okay? Okay. All right, next on tonight's agenda is adjournment, is there a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting?
Motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Okay.
All right, you all in favor of adjournment, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, tonight's meeting is adjourned, thank you.
Stand.